Orders stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in our hearts.
Sue with you, food call roll please.
Councilmember Handfield.
Here.
Councilmember Chambers.
Here.
Councilmember Phillips.
Here.
Councilmember Salzweil.
Here.
And Mayor DeBoer.
I am here. And I'll look for a motion to approve the consent agenda for tonight.
So moved outside second.
Discussion or changes? Sue?
Councilmember Chambers.
Yes.
Councilmember Handfield.
Yes.
Mayor DeBoer.
Yes.
Councilmember Salzweil.
Yes.
And Councilmember Phillips.
Yes.
All right. Citizen comment items not on the agenda. Yep.
Al Ekman, 725 Bowes Road. I'm here on behalf of WRWW. I just want to bring something to the attention of the council members and those in attendance that a week from this coming Wednesday, April 25th is National High School Radio Day, the one day of the year in which high schools that have a radio station can show it off. And we would like to have anyone in the community that might be interested in coming up to the high school to see what the radio station is like. We'll give you a tour up there. We're going to debut our new mobile radio studio. You'll have a chance to see the students. There's only about 180 high schools that have their own radio station throughout the United States, only about three of them in Michigan, and Lowell is fortunate to have one of them due to the generosity of Lowell Cable TV Fund and the city council members and all the administrators. So we'd like to have you there. That's a week from this coming Wednesday, April 25th. We'll basically take our operation out in the hallway adjacent to our radio room and the students will be broadcasting from there. Thank you.
What time is that, Al?
Pardon me?
What time?
Okay, we'll start at 7:30 in the morning and we'll go through 2:30 in the afternoon.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? No? All right, move to whole business number four, item A, city hall stepping.
And follow up to our discussion last meeting, I've done some research on this matter and tried to look at some options. Really where we stand, I'm after review, I'm proposing no changes to the city hall schedule. The ideas that I thought could work, after further review, they're not going to work. So and there's really not going to be, it's really not going to be an issue to keep it status quo. I still would like to allow the TPW to go to 410s in the summertime. And that's, that's really all I have.
Everybody?
Mike, was Lowell Light Power then going to, were they going to let their workers do that too then, or is it just?
I don't want to speak for Steve, but I think they're, they're going to probably mimic whatever we do.
We just talked about that Thursday, so. Perry address that. Perry Beecham, board chairman at Lowell Light Power. We're planning on, we're looking to see what the city was going to do, but in our discussion we felt that our offices should be open eight to five, Monday through Friday. But our linemen, we're going to, we've talked to IVEW and we're going to go to four 10-hour days. It will actually save, it'll be more productive because our, when our guys come in the morning, they have to check the trucks out, do a safety check, do a safety check onsite. And so having that extended time is going to actually make them more productive. It's not even going to cost our ratepayers anything more. They'll still be having their 40-hour week, but that's what our plan is to go to.
When are you looking to start that, Perry?
I couldn't, we really didn't talk about that. I guess that'd be a question for Steve and Ryan.
Thanks. We would love you doing it the weekend after Memorial Day, so I believe two, fourth through roughly April 12th, something around there.
Are we going to stagger our guys so that Friday's covered or just everybody's off on Friday?
I think the intent was to have everyone working together on the same days. We followed the thought of just doing everyone on the same day.
And we have somebody on call anyway.
Yes.
So.
Not, not the water plant, correct?
The water plant will be, we still have to work that out, but yeah, they'll always be covered to the water plant.
Okay. Anybody else on that? All right. Good business, number five, item A, North Broadway Mill and Overlay Michael. And Brian?
At the DDA meeting on Thursday, they reviewed it, they had a proposal to, they had budgeted $90,000 in their budget for repaving Broadway Street. We presented a proposal to, to the DDA board, which they approved. And this project would run in conjunction with the current project on Broadway. This project would be completed before June 30th. We anticipate the total cost coming in just, just over, a hair over $90,000. As I said, this was budgeted. There is going to be some realigning of manholes, casting, and valve boxes for both Hudson Street and, and Broadway. And we, we believe the cost for both of those streets would be about $40,000 individually from the water and wastewater fund, which we would need to, we would just need to do a budget amendment for that. But the DDA did approve the expenditure, however, since it is your road, technically you have to approve the construction. And I'm recommending that the city council approve the mill and overlay of North Broadway Street as I described. Brian Milaut's here to kind of explain in more detail as to what we're going to be doing.
If you have questions, I guess just to let the council know that in your packet there was a, a cost sheet. And just to let you know that the, the numbers there, of course, don't add up to a total right now and any on the sheet that you had. It's because it was a preliminary sheet that was given to the DDA and we included a column on the right that was some ADA ramps that we wanted to talk about during the DDA meeting. And those have been added in, and so now we have a new sheet that corrects that amount. But in essence, what we've done is we have the pavement that we decided to, we did cores out there on the pavement to verify pavement thickness. And really it varies anywhere between two and a half inches to three and a half inches. And we think that it'll be a better product if rather than just milling two inches, we'll mill all three, which will also leave us a few extra millings that we can fill in a couple of little lower spots. We're concerned about a couple, some puddling spots, and that'll let us fix those. We've also got in there some spot curb replacement and, as Mike mentioned, some structure adjustments. And then of course the ADA ramps that I just mentioned, that'll bring those up to code as well. So that's, again, it's not a full, what I'd call a full streetscape project. We're still leaving most of the existing curves and sidewalks intact, so it won't go beyond the curb lines, but it'll provide all-new pavement. And also looking at the pavement out there, we evaluated it and it looks like we've got pretty good base still. The pavement distress that we see looks typical of just aged pavement. As pavement gets old, it oxidizes, it loses its flexibility, and so as it expands and contracts in the, in the sun and cold, it, as it gets more brittle, it just cracks. And that's what we see out there. So we didn't see anything that's indicative of problems with the gravel base underneath. So we should have a good product by milling off the asphalt and putting new asphalt back. The other thing we did also do was look at the utilities that are under the road just to make sure they're in okay shape, so we can get some good life out of the pavement and the sewer and the water are fine in there and should last until the next road reconstruction need.
So remarkings in this cost too?
Correct. Yep, the pavement markings are as well. And along with that, we'll also look at some of the, some more marking space striped for ADA accessibility or some barrier-free access. We'll get a few more spots out there, I think, also.
The pond issue is the one that's along the west side of that, right?
Yep, by the post office there.
Back towards?
Yep.
Does that pond terrible right there?
Yep, and we're going to look at how best to strategize, how best to get rid of that without getting into a whole ton of curbs.
Right.
Yep, that'll be part of it. Matter of fact, we'll be working with Jeff Van Siders if we don't get any rain soon. If the snow doesn't go away, we'll, we'll need to flood the area a little bit, at least one time. Or we'll use rain if it, if this thing finally melts and we get some rain and we get some rain, then we'll get out there after rain and verify where all the puddles are and mark them out.
Couple of questions. I was at the DDA meeting when you discussed ramps. Picture views that we have here from overhead, I only see three curves on that that are being redone.
Yeah.
But it lists seven in the description.
Yep, that was just a preliminary drawing that we used to sketch up and get pavement quantities from. We've gone, we've looked at each of the ramps, so it'll, it'll, any of the ramps that we're touching, there are seven of them out there that need to get redone, so those are all comprehensive. Yes.
Okay. Like you say, also the numbers did change a little bit from what we had in our packet and the one that was just handed out. The project administration costs stayed the same at $6,000. There's a contingency that went from $11,000 on our first sheet down to seven.
Yep, we dropped the contingency a little bit. The other number that's not going to quite add up right, because there's a varied formula, is under that column that says paved three inches. If you add up those numbers in the column, they, they don't add up down to the $38,009. It's because that 38,916 number actually has a 10% contingency put into it because the graders, when they grade out the gravel, can only get so close that a 10% allows for a little bit of tolerance in paving. If they end up a little bit low with the gravel, it gets made up with the tunis because we have a surface we want to hit. And it's about 10%, is what we see on it. It's kind of the same on all jobs. It's as close as they can get with gravel grading.
And forgive me here, I'm new at this, but I'm also a business owner that looks at dollars and cents. And so we've got a 10% contingency with another contingency on top of that. And our contingency and our management fees are about 25% of the project. Isn't that a pretty big number?
The contingency is only because we haven't done a lot of investigation on it. I, I don't know for sure if I'll run into anything. I don't think we will. If we for some reason run into a soft spot somewhere that we, because it hasn't been tested and opened up, that would take care of a little bit of undercutting and replacement with sand if we needed to. So that's why we just thought we'd rather have you budget for that number than have to bare bones it and then come back for extras in case we run into anything. The goal would be to not use any of that contingency.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
Yep, absolutely.
When we're, when we're done with this matter, Brian's also going to explain to you how we're going to address Broadway Street with the sidewalk. There's been a couple of, this has been something that they've been working on for years before I came here and there's been some communication gaps, so I think Brian's going to explain that.
On the contingencies, if it's, if it's used and you even itemize what those contingencies were used on?
Oh, absolutely. Yes. And as a, as a note, the, the pricing that is on there is really for the pavement removal and the new pavement. And then the, the curving work is all the extended unit prices from the Broadway project. So it's, it's bid prices from the South Broadway project.
Go with that, you guys outside? With that, I'll make a motion to approve the overlay of North Broadway Street in the manner prescribed.
Out of support? Any other questions for Brian? Sue?
Councilmember Handfield.
Yes.
Mayor DeBoer.
Yes.
Councilmember Salzweil.
Yes.
Councilmember Phillips.
Yes.
Councilmember Chambers.
Yes.
Brian again.
Thanks. Mike had mentioned that there is some, some question about how we came to the, I guess, the design or, or how we decided to go on and put back Broadway Street basically between the tracks and Ottawa. And really what it amounted to was the idea that as the project started progressing and then King Milling acquired the Michigan Wire property, they then had a lot of ideas and plans for what they wanted to do for the property, but nothing was set in stone. So in, as we were going through the design of North Broadway, we've started having some discussions with them about what they want to do with the grade. As you know, south of the tracks, they have the, the scale that's on the, the west side of the, it's kind of tucked back in between the silos. And trucks come out of there at an angle and that scale is higher than Broadway. And they've always had, King Milling has always had some issues with the grade change there coming down that little drive ramp and hitting the road. So that prompted some discussion about, well, do you want to modify, you as in King Milling, want to modify any of those grades in there? We have some flexibility. We're tied in with the elevation at the railroad track, but south of that, we have a lot of flexibility with which way the road gets tipped and how much it gets raised or lowered. All those discussions really started them thinking and, and bottom line was they're not yet sure what they want to do. So although on a street, we normally would have put the street back and put curb back and put sidewalk back, in the case of that stretch, we said, let's not do that now because King Milling doesn't yet know what they want to do. So which means that one, we, as a city, wouldn't spend money on curb and pavement yet until they, King Milling knows what they want to do grading wise. Didn't make sense to, to put public money into something that King Milling might rip up. Now theoretically, that doesn't cost the public any money, it costs King Milling money, but it still kind of doesn't look great when we spend public money on something that then a year later, however long later, gets ripped up before its life cycle. The same thing goes for the sidewalk. When we put sidewalk in, normal sidewalk is four inches thick. In cases where it crosses a driveway, it's six inches thick, so it can take the load from traffic. We don't know in that stretch, excuse me, where King Milling might want access drives off from Broadway. Being that, the same thing would have happened to the sidewalk is once they had decided to put drives where they needed to, if we had built the walk already, we probably would have put it back at four inch, not knowing where the drives go. They would have ripped some of it out and put some of it back in. Same thing with curb headers, they would have had to cut the curb heads. So we would have had that kind of a chopped up curb. So our thought was, let's not spend that public money now, let's wait until King Milling knows what they need to do. Two things we see would happen then is if we wait, is one, we'll put gravel back now so they have a travel surface. Two, we wouldn't do anything with the road until they knew what they were going to do with their grades there. And three, the sidewalk that would be on the east side of Broadway would be part of their site plan as any normal development would do. So that was our thought process. And I know there's been a lot of, the project's been a long time coming, so it sounds like some of that, that thought process hasn't gotten translated to everybody down the line, which is understandable. So sorry that there was any confusion about that.
But we are, we are paving now from the tracks to Ottawa?
Not planning on it right now. I know, I have gotten an email from King Milling asking us to do so, and we haven't, from a city perspective, agreed to do that yet. So the money, the money is there in the bond amount to do so, and it could be contributed towards that. We would only spend what we would have spent anyway on the project, not more than that, but we're, we're waiting on that stretch.
But we are paving from then Ottawa all the way around Bowes Road up to the new traffic lane.
Correct.
Is there any curbing going in there and sidewalks are going in there?
Uh, no sidewalks, just curving. And, and I thought on the sidewalks in that stretch where that, you know, the fair is going to be moving in two years, is what they're saying, right? They've got the Deer Run property, they're working on that. I thought again was we didn't want to spend money on infrastructure without having a master plan in place. We're not sure what's going to go in there. I guess I, we wouldn't recommend putting in sidewalk right now along that stretch only because it may change two years from now. And I'd hate to put money into a sidewalk unless council really wants to, we will. But I'd rather not put money into a sidewalk that I'm not sure if it's going to fit in the, in the final plan that you want two or three years from now. That, that was the rationale. Is it, is it doesn't harm anything to not put it in now other than that we don't have sidewalk headed down there? But again, not knowing what a master plan might be for that area, that, that's what we'd like to do before we put in that much more infrastructure. And sidewalks, I just didn't have a spot for it to land.
What is the timeline for King Milling coming up with their plan for that area? Do we know?
I don't, I haven't heard. I know they're working on it. They would hope, they had wanted to try to get something to us here this midsummer, but I haven't seen any plans on paper yet.
My concern is that's a recreational area that, you know, with the fair and two years, I think, is a wish and a dream for the fair. I think they're further out than that, but there's a lot of people that walk back and forth through there and especially if we're not paving the road, but even if we are, the truck traffic is going to increase because I think it was 50/50 before the direction that it went. Now it's 100%. So we don't have sidewalks, we're going to have pedestrians walking in an area that is truck traffic. I just think we need to get sidewalks at least down to Ottawa.
And there was also, just as a note, there was some question about if or where the trail might land, the Laura Trail. If that came across, if that was going to be south down by the river, trying to cross underneath the bridge there, or if it was going to be further up north by Bowes, that may change as well because there's the light going in at Bowes and that may, may push some of the direction of the trail too. So that would change a connection point as well. Just something to consider.
Yeah, I, I think I'd like to see the, the sidewalk put in down through there, simple fact, there's all the trucks going that way. We can't ask pedestrians to walk with 80,000 pound trucks sitting here. They need to be in a safe spot. So the sidewalk, in my opinion, should be put in.
Maybe down through like the King parking lot there, a little bit past Ottawa, but at that point, they're into the fairgrounds a little bit and they're dispersed, but.
So the, so the stretch, I think your thing is from the, from the tracks south to Ottawa?
Well, another, probably 50 yards past that to that parking lot.
Oh, the, the farming building?
Yeah, the farming building. Just at that point, there's other areas and it's just a little more pedestrian friendly at that point. But I, I think to that point, it would be a good idea to see sidewalks down there.
Because we know that when the fair leaves or King Milling comes to planning commission, even if the sidewalk was put in there, they're going to be notified on their, you know, that you're going to put the curbing in, you know, you're going to do curb cuts, you're going to do the sidewalk, there's a minimum you need to put in the six inch, you know, to do.
Yep. Nope, as long as we know that, so the idea is we wouldn't put in curbing and pavement from the tracks to Ottawa, but if there, but there will be sidewalk line exception. So at some point then King Milling will have to, well, we'll have to work with them because wherever, currently there are really two places they're primarily crossing that area with the trucks. And, and that would need to be made six inch now so it'll handle, handle the weight. So we can do that.
Yeah, I'm not sure the Cs do it now. And later down the road, when they start their construction project, then, you know, they can cut in, make it correct for what they're going to need, but for right now, I think just safety factor is all it boils down to. If they take another year. Yeah. A year and a half, two years at least with the sidewalk. Yep.
Okay, that's very doable.
That's money we're going to spend anyway.
Yep. Yep. Nope, appreciate you, just that, that was the rationale that came to that point, so we can change direction, no problem.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else for Brian? Thanks for that. Item B, computer server upgrades, Michael.
In front of you is a proposal from Midoriho Technologies regarding server upgrades to our current system. Currently, our server is approximately eight years old and has served its useful life, and we are looking at replacing the server. And we've already started some of this process by going to a cloud-based system for our email system. This is something that we did budget for this year and it's, there's funds available in the data processing fund. There's a proposal from Midoriho. The total cost going forward is $21,173. This includes the cost of purchasing the server and the time for Midoriho and Core HiCom to complete the installation process. This also will include 25 licenses for the city to purchase Microsoft Office. We looked at either going with a monthly subscription service or purchasing the licenses from Microsoft outright. After reviewing the matter, it appears more cost-effective for us to purchase the license which can last somewhere between five to seven years rather than paying a monthly subscription per user of $7.50 per month. I'm recommending that the city accept the proposal from Midoriho Technologies and install the server. That cost not to exceed $21,173. Betsy Davidson from Midoriho is here tonight to ask, answer any questions about the server, if you have any.
It's been a long time coming, hasn't it? Couple of years, this?
Does, does this include a service maintenance contract over the course of the next five to seven years and not what that cost would be?
Um, like in the past, we have not had a service maintenance contract with you. So we are on an as-needed basis of when you call.
I'm talking about from the manufacturer on the server, is it a Dell? What are you looking at?
Oh, yeah, Dell.
A Dell and they have their 24-hour response report?
Yep, the server is unlimited warranty until like three or four years, until we get to the point where we need to replace hardware, then we have to buy that outright.
Does it include the, any upgrades on the Microsoft? Does it change monthly for any firmware, software upgrades? Is that included in this? Is there additional costs for those upgrades?
Well, updates are, are included with maintenance.
Maintenance?
Yeah, as needed. Yep.
You have anything else?
Uh-uh.
Okay.
Anything else for Betsy? All right. Server upgrade motion?
I'll make that motion to approve the cost of $21,173 for the upgrades.
Out of support? Any other discussion? Sue?
Mayor DeBoer.
Yes.
Councilmember Salzweil.
Yes.
Councilmember Phillips.
Yes.
Councilmember Chambers.
Yes.
Councilmember Handfield.
Yes.
All right. Item C is SCADA.
All right. Department of Public Works has been working on taking bids for a SCADA software program for our water treatment plant, and I have Brian Van Gielen coming up to the podium. He's going to tell us what SCADA is, and then we'll talk about his recommendation.
It's supervisory control and data acquisition. It's a computer software, basically controlling and acquiring all the information at the water plant. So we can get rid of the old paper circle charts and the 1970s controls at the water plant. It's been a long time coming.
That's going to come with the, the alert, so it'll alert you on your cell phone now if something, if you have problems, everybody.
Yep.
Quick response time, quick everything.
Absolutely.
Any other questions for Brian?
What's the expandability? I mean, is there a way down the road that you could actually have smart meters at your home that would comply with this for water usage, sewer usage, or is that a totally different?
That's a totally different thing, yeah. This is just at the water plant area, the pump stations and the water tanks.
So we received three bids ranging from $98,375 to $130,500. The low bid was UIS SCADA out of Dexter, Michigan. However, Brian has had a demonstration, what, all three of these?
Uh, bottom two.
Bottom two, okay. So Brian had a demonstration from the bottom two, and we're going to recommend we accept the bid from RS Technology, excuse me, RS Technical Services on low for $104,700 because that just seems like it's a better fit for Brian's operation.
Brian, can you explain one more monitoring options that needs, so there's more monitoring options?
In their bid and what they were proposing, they're offering more, monitoring more things within the plant for that price. The lower bid was not monitoring as much. And the big, the big price difference is in the software. RS Technical is actually selling us the, the SCADA software and all of the program. In the low bid, it was just the SCADA software. So if we ever had to have anything changed, we have to call them back.
I'll buy it.
And this is the one-time purchase, we'll buy all the software and it is good for until, until hardware, they can't communicate with hardware for updating or hardware. So it should be a long-term purchase.
Any other questions for Brian? Good. Thanks, Brian.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Rich?
Rich, this is, this has always been put in our budget?
This was budgeted, yes. And $104,000 falls into the budget. I think we had budgeted $100,000, so we're, we're a little bit over, but.
Worth it.
It's worth it, yeah. It's a local company. If I recall from looking at their service fees too, the RS Technical Services was a lower per-cost service fee. We had to call them in for anything as well compared to the EOS SCADA. them in for anything as well compared to the UIS SCADA. I think there's better value in that, RS Technical Services.
And they're local.
And they're local, yep.
All right, I'll look for the SCADA recommendation.
I'd make a motion that RS Technical Services be awarded the project for the city Lowell Water Treatment Plant SCADA software provider and integrator.
I'll support. Any other discussion?
Sue?
Councilmember Salzweil?
Yes.
Councilmember Phillips?
Yes.
Councilmember Chambers?
Yes.
Councilmember Canfield?
Yes.
And Mayor DeGore?
Yes.
Item D, Resolution 1218 with Midwest Aviation Services.
Casey Brown, the airport manager, is here this evening to discuss this with you. Good evening.
We are looking for approval from the council to allow us to bring in a new fixed-based operation, which performs mechanical services at the airport. We have been without for a few years now. Larry Bauer in Sparta had been by and large providing a lot of mechanical service around Lowell, Sparta area. He's retired, and now we have a new group that's coming in, which is Midwest Aviation Services. They are coming in the Lowell here to operate. And it fits the bill well here. We needed some additional aviation draw, and we're already seeing impacts from Sparta coming here, impacts from Greenville, and the businesses in Greenville and Lakeview, other adjacent airports. They're looking closer and closer to retirement, and we can see a bigger draw from those areas as well. So I think this is a good fit. We're actually going to generate revenue from some of the space at the airport that we didn't generate revenue from before, so there's a little additional income into the airport fund that can be associated with this as well. And the business model is solid. We have a general manager and two mechanics, and the general manager is also licensed to be mechanic as well. So we have one guy beating the streets, bringing in business, and two guys trimming wrenches, and they're looking for additional certifications. They're actually going down to Ohio right now to get certified on some specialty engines, and try to bring that in and become a distributor here in Lowell servicing at the Midwest. So I see some potential here to bring some decent economy into the city, some more visitors, and some more commerce here inside of the town as well while people are coming in. We foresee a fairly decent uptick in activity up at the airport as well. Looking for resolution from the council to approve.
Questions for Casey? Thank you, Casey.
Thank you.
All right, we'll look for a motion on Resolution 1218.
So who?
I'll support.
Any other discussion? Sue?
Councilmember Phillips?
Yes.
Councilmember Chambers?
Yes.
Councilmember Canfield?
Yes.
Mayor DeGore?
Yes.
Councilmember Salzweil?
Yes.
Item E, Comprehensive Tree Plan.
The city's Arbor Board reviewed the 2018-19 Comprehensive Tree Plan at its April 9, 2018 meeting. The tree plan is presented to the city council annually in April, and it outlines the proposed Arbor Board activities on city-owned property and within the right of way for the upcoming fiscal year. Arbor Board activities including coordinating Arbor Day celebrations, developing spring and fall plantings, tree removal and trimming, water and general care of trees, shrubs and plants. With the Comprehensive Tree Plan, the Arbor Board develops a vision for the community's tree canopy, develops a planned approach to executing the vision, and achieves the goal of maintaining and improving the city's urban forest canopy. Funding for these activities comes from the city of Lowell, Lowell Light Power, the LCTV Fund, the Look Fund, and the Lowell Area Community Fund. And the recommendation is that the Lowell City Council approve the 2018-19 Comprehensive Tree Plan.
I would make a motion that we approve the 2018-2019 Arbor Board Comprehensive Tree Plan.
I'll support.
Discussion on it? Sue?
Councilmember Chambers?
Yes.
Councilmember Canfield?
Yes.
Mayor DeGore?
Yes.
Councilmember Salzweil?
Yes.
And Councilmember Phillips?
Yes.
All right, here we go. Whereas in 1872, J. Sterling Norton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees, and whereas the holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska, and whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world, and whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, lower our heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife, and whereas trees are a renewable resource giving us paper or wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products, and whereas trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, and beautify our community, and whereas trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. Now, therefore, be it resolved that I Mike DeGore, Mayor of the city of Lowell, do hereby proclaim every last Friday in April is Arbor Day in the city of Lowell, and I urge all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day and to support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands. And further, I urge all citizens to plant and care for trees, to gladden the heart, and promote the well-being of this and future generations, dated the 16th day of April in the year 2018. We'll look for a motion to approve the Arbor Day proclamation.
I'll make a motion that we approve the Arbor Day proclamation. I'll support.
All right, Sue?
Councilmember Canfield?
Yes.
Mayor DeGore?
Yes.
Councilmember Salzweil?
Yes.
Councilmember Phillips?
Yes.
And Councilmember Chambers?
Yes.
All right, lines one, fire authority building agreement. Michael?
For some time, I've been working with Fire Chief Van Overbeek of the Lowell Area Fire Department on clarification of who's responsible for maintenance at the fire station. Currently, the fire department has been maintaining the building, but the agreement regarding the fire authority didn't provide details to this, as the city owns the building. Attach to this an agreement between the city and the Lowell Area Fire Authority, which was approved by their board at their April 9, 2018 meeting. In essence, the agreement states that the fire authority will be responsible for maintaining their building at their expense. This also includes major repairs to the HVAC roof and utility systems. The city and authority would agree to split costs of any maintenance of the driveway north of the building utilized by the DPW. The agreement also states that the fire authority will ensure the building at their expense. The city attorney drafted this agreement in conjunction with the fire attorney, fire authority attorney, and both are fine with the language in the agreement, and I'm recommending that the Lowell City Council enter into a memorandum of understanding with the Lowell Area Fire Authority regarding maintenance of the fire station at 315 South Hudson.
And that is in your packet. We approved it last Monday at the fire authority meeting after a lot of back and forth between Peter and Dick. So I'll recommend that the Lowell City Council enter into a memorandum of understanding with the Lowell Area Fire Authority regarding maintenance of the fire station at 315 South Hudson.
I'll support.
Any other discussion? Anyone got a chance to read it in the back? Sue?
Mayor DeGore?
Yes.
Councilmember Salzweil?
Yes.
Councilmember Phillips?
Yes.
Councilmember Chambers?
Yes.
And Councilmember Canfield?
Yes.
All right. Discussion, questions, comments, concerns on the monthly reports section. All right, we'll go to Board and Commission reporter Jeffrey.
I don't have anything new to report. The next historic district commission meeting is April 24th at 6 o'clock downstairs.
Thank you, Mr. Salzweil.
I have nothing for my words.
Mr. Canfield?
The water board met last week, and Ryan Excavating is going to take up finishing the Section 1A from G Drive down to Main Street, and they will be finishing that project up that they started last fall. And then there is some promising development of an alternate route along Bowes Road that will help with the neighbors that are concerned, so we're looking forward to making some progress on that.
Thank you, Mr. Chambers.
Monday at Planning Commission, we gave a special land use permit to 215 West Main. One of the building owners is going forward, and be putting apartments in upstairs. Long time coming. Glad to have them there. Benton Baker Group is going to put a new dealership where the Bennetts currently sit. They're going to razz it all out, brand-new building. It's going to be great. And we had our first short-term rental come to us for special land use, but he never showed up, so we had to table it till next month. Lowell Light Power, as Perry said, we talked about, possibly putting a lineman on 410s and keeping the staff the same, and that's about all we have.
Cool. All right, I'll start with DEA. We went over the budget for 2019, added an additional, I think it had to be $20,000, $20,000 for Liz in the chamber to use on marketing, stuff like that. We talked about the Broadway mill and overlay, and we also had somebody come to us proposing we buy the big oil park. Fire Authority, we covered the fire station lease that we just approved. They got bids for overhead door repairs and HVAC repairs, which are both a long time coming. They both come with pretty good preventative maintenance plans. And we set our budget. Then, what else did I do? Fair Board, we met, they covered a lot. They're, they're in full mode over there. If you ever get a chance to sit through one of their meetings, it's a lot of fun. So they're going to be getting stuff going over there. Then tomorrow, 4:00 p.m., at the school building is the Vision Alliance meeting. Mike and I, the townships, Liz Baker, and the schools. What else do we have? Is that it? That's it. That makes it your turn, Mr. Brown. City Manager, report.
As prescribed by charter, being the third Monday in April, I presented to you this morning your, your budget for fiscal year 19. Currently, the budget is available on the website, so if you're inclined to read it, it's there. We will be having a budget session on Saturday, April 28th, at 10:00 a.m. at Lowell Light and Power, going over the budget then. I really haven't done much last week, other than dealing with the budget. That's pretty much what I've spent most of my, I would say, most of my time the last couple of weeks on, still getting that prepared. However, last week, did have a representative from the USDA come and speak to me. They're coming out and informing communities now of a possible infestation problem that could, could happen. What this is, is it's called the Asian Longhorn Beetle, and what it is, is similar to the Emerald Ash Borer in a sense, but it actually does a lot more damage than what the Ash Borer did to the trees here in Michigan. What this, what this beetle actually does is, these beetles, they'll actually infest an area where trees are, preferably maple trees, but they will go for oak trees and, and whatever tree they can really get in front of. And one of the things they do different than what the Ash Borer did, what the Ash Borer did was, here would be the tree, the Emerald Ash Borer would like bore, would bore into the exterior part of the tree. What the, what the Asian Longhorn Beetle does is it actually goes through the tree, and it just kills the tree. Where, with the Emerald Ash Borer, the tree would die slower over time. This would actually just kill the tree. And this, this started in New York. New York City had a major issue with this, to where there were blocks of streets where they actually just had to, the solution unfortunately is to remove the trees. That's the only solution, is they have to uproot the trees and, and then just replant them. And this has been, what I best explain to me is basically been coming down I-90, and right now, they have had spottings of it in Chicago. It hasn't reached Michigan yet, but they are, they are telling us that it will probably be here eventually. As of right now, there's no, they don't really have an eradication method yet. They're trying to figure one out, but they are informing us of it, and they've given us a lot of different information in packets and all that, so we can start educating ourselves about it, and so at least if our staff are in Parks, and they can go through it and start paying attention to it if need be. So that was, that was, that was actually pretty interesting, because I'd never even heard of the Asian Longhorn.
Is that, is that something, we pass that on then to DPW? Is that something we can pass on as well to the Arbor Board and to Parks, and maybe even to Lara?
Probably a good idea.
I don't think it would hurt to get that out to as many people as we can. Sorry to interrupt.
That's fine. So, just making the public aware of that issue. And the only other thing is Dan Burton will be here on May 15th for the walking audit, and that's all I have this evening.
All right. Sue, am I correct, there are no applications for the officer compensation or LCTV vacancies?
Correct.
Okay. I think local officer's compensation, that expires June 30th, so, oh, 2021, and then the other ones through the end of the year, so if you want to get on some boards, come give Sue your application. Those are the only vacancies, so move on to council comments. Jeffrey?
I'm all set. I hope everybody has a great week.
Thank you, Mr. Salzweil.
Good, thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Canfield.
Nothing.
Thank you, Mr. Chambers.
Wednesday is Lineman Appreciation Day, so I encourage everybody, if you see our guys out in the truck, don't let go. That's all we have.
Very good. Reminder, the 20th, 4:00 p.m. community fund grants are due, the 27th, 4:00 p.m. Look Fund grants are due. Also, next Wednesday, Administrative Professionals Day, so make sure you get down here and bring them snacks, and then I'll come down and finish what they don't eat. Mr. Salzweil?
Mr. Peter?
Just one quick.
Yep.
Because I, we thought that we were going to make an appointment to Laura. There's a vacancy. Betsy knows more.
Um, Rich Conrad?
Yes.
So we can do it, you can do it in two weeks, but.
Okay.
He's ready to.
Okay, we'll add that to our appointment list.
We've been short one person at large, Laura.
Oh.
And I know that Virgin Township and Lowell Township are making their.
Appointments tonight.
Appointments this week, so.
We have somebody interested, they just need to be reappointed?
They just need to be appointed. What is his name?
Mitch Conrad.
Yeah, so his name is Rich Conrad, and he lives in the city, and he's been a resident here for a couple of years, but he's, he's very interested in joining our, our Laura Board.
Al Halzweisen moved out of the community, and he was at the at-large member, and so we've been without an at-large member for six months or so.
Since December, yeah, November.
All right, I'll look for that motion to appoint Rich Conrad to the Labor Board right now.
I'll make a motion to approve Rich, what was his license?
Conrad.
Conrad to the Laura Board.
I'll support. Discussion. All right, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close by name.
Thank you.
Mr. Salzweil, I'm on your hand.
I'd like him to join our juror at 7:47.
All right, hold those in favor.
Yes, yes.